Appeals meeting of, what's today, October 26th. To order, can we start with a roll call?
Aziz Anson.
Norma Drummond.
James Meyer.
Thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we have two changes to our agenda. Number one, there is not going to be a number nine. The applicant there has just re- will not be available to this evening, so he's asked to have his appeal heard next month. And then, we need to add a court issue to the end, some litigation resolution. So, our attorney will take us through it. So, it, we'll just add it to the end, because there's no, but there will not be anyone here for that decision, for that issue, so we'll just add it. We do have two sets of minutes to approve. We have minutes from our Tuesday, August 24th meeting. Has anyone wished to make a motion? As, I think with the amendment.
As amended.
Very few amendments to that one.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
We have to add to the roll call.
Yeah, Brandon's?
Brandon Rodas.
You're gonna, well, go ahead. So, Brandon, was, was he, Brandon, here for the April, for the August meeting, or no?
For the August one, no.
Okay. And you weren't here either?
For August, I was here.
Okay.
May I make a motion?
Okay. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Brandon, are you voting for them, or are you going to recuse for the August minutes?
Aye.
Okay, that's fine. And then, for the September minutes?
Make a motion to-
Yeah, very few changes.
Accept the minutes as amended.
I was not present, so I would abstain.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with one abstention. Okay. Our next meetings are going to be Tuesday, November 23rd, which will be right before Thanksgiving, and then Tuesday, December 28th, which will be right after Christmas. So, the usual order of our, the business that we do this evening would be first to hear public hearings. Those are applications that this board has had an opportunity to already review. And what we did was, we then noticed the neighbors, your neighbors, to ask if they, you know, their opinion of what you're asking for. So, that's, the first part of our meeting is those public hearings that have been noticed and already heard by this board. Then, the second part of the meeting is the reviews. Those are applications or appeals that the, this board has not seen yet, or has not had a discussion with the applicants about. So, that's where item number nine, there will not be an item number nine this evening. So, so I'm going to just jump right into it. We have, we're going to start with item number one, which is Appeal 4010, Gino Forgione, Gino Forgione, Two Pel- Pelbridge Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a special permit to allow 600 cubic yards of fill to be brought on-site pursuant to Section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good. You had a little bit of a puddle in your yard today.
The rain, yeah.
Yeah, so I drive on Beekman Road, you have a corner lot there. We had an opportunity to review your application last, this, last month. You have a bit of a sinkhole, honestly, here.
Yeah, well, as soon as he, as soon as the contractor spreads everything out, we're good. I can't do any work.
But my point was, it was even worse, you know, with what's there now.
Yeah, but what my point is, as soon as it's spread out, it's not going to be, because when it runs off, and then you got the flaps going into the ground also. I'm sorry.
Watch the mic.
It'll be fine, but right now, I can't do anything, because I've got to stop work ordinance, so I can't touch the ground at all.
So, so your intention was to fill in all the craters that were in your yard, and to kind of level it off, so you're, you have a-
Well, yeah, it's pretty much filled in now, we just, we just want to finish it, and then, you know, and then, I think you heard from my neighbor too, he's doing the same thing, and we're leveling it on the same level.
Okay, so, so yes, that was part of the discussion. Your neighbor is uphill from you?
Yes.
As you head up Pelbridge. And so, one of the issues that we had asked about was whether any drainage issues, without what it would drain, it's not gonna, it's actually going to drain closer to the Beekman roadside.
Yeah, it's actually going to drain in the back and off to the Beekman Road, so. And then, you know, once he does his permit, and he gets, he's using the same contractor, once he gets everything into you guys, and you guys approve, and we flatten it out the same level, we should be fine.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members?
None.
I'm good.
I'm good.
So, is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Gino Forgione, Two Pelbridge Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a special permit to allow 600 cubic yards of fill to be brought on-site? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Hold on one second, we're not going to close it just yet, because you commented that we had a neighbor letter that we got last month. Is it in my file from last month? Or no, we gave it to you, right? So, let's hold the, hold the motion on the-
Should be here.
I just want to read the neighbor letter into the record.
You should have one, I think he actually told me he was sending me, sending a letter. No?
I didn't get one? Okay. All right, then. Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so the public hearing is closed, and resolution?
This one.
Appeal number 4010, Gino Forgione, application for a special permit to deposit an additional 600 cubic yards of fill pursuant to Section 194-75 of the town code. Two Pelbridge Drive, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by Zoning Board of Appeals member Brandon Rodas, whereas the applicant is permitted to add 375 cubic yards of fill to his property per year without needing to apply for a special permit. And whereas the applicant intends to make his backyard safer by filling in craters, which requires more than 375 cubic yards of fill. And whereas the applicant and his neighbor are both adding fill to their properties to make them more level, and the applicant's property is at a lower topography than the immediate neighbor, so there will be no harm to the neighboring property. And whereas this is a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on October 20th, 2021. And whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on October 26th, 2021. Now therefore, as a result of the foregoing, the decision and order of the Zoning Board of Appeals is as follows. This application meets the requirements of Section 194-75 of the town code. And therefore, the ZBA grants the application for a special permit for up to an additional 600 yards of cubic fill, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall submit a plan to the satisfaction of the town engineer, which includes erosion and dust control practices. All fill brought to the property must clean fill without any deleterious material. 12 is the maximum number of loads of fill that can be brought to the property per day. Fill may only be brought to the property between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on weekdays. Fill may not be brought to the property on weekends or on holidays. And the applicant must maintain an escrow account in the amount of $500 for the inspections by the town's environmental monitor. Now therefore, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filled with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant/owner. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of decision and order to be filled with, filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant/owner.
Thank you. Before we add a second, I just want to remove the word "additional," so they're not going to get a special permit for an additional 600 yards, they're getting a permit for a total of 600, okay? So, with that amendment.
Second.
Thank you. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Rocco?
Just want to make sure, this is Gino Forgione we're discussing?
Correct. Number one, yep. And myself, aye. So, you're all set, your motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Item number two, Appeal 4011, William Evans, 18 Lake Walton Road, Wapengers Falls, is requesting a six-foot sideline variance for a proposed 40-foot by 18-foot, or 720-square-foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening, board.
So, we had an opportunity to review your application last month. You are on Lake Walton Road, essentially opposite Fiskville Plains. You're the house in the front, but you've got a flag lot behind you, so you've got a long driveway that runs up the side of your house, and, you know, the building inspector had gone out and determined that you have a lot of extra thing, or things in your yard that really could use from the benefit of being stored inside. And so, what you've asked for is a, is a rather long garage, because again, you were looking to stack some historic cars or some-
Yep.
Older model cars in there, as well as the vehicles you said you would use regularly would be in the front.
That's correct.
So, that's why you were asking for, you know, a rather large garage, you said it would match your house. Anything else? Any other comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
No, I'm good.
Okay. So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from William Evans, 18 Lake Walton Road, Wapengers Falls, requesting a six-foot sideline variance for a proposed 40-foot by 18-foot detached garage? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is Appeal number 40-
Hold on, sorry.
You have another letter?
This one has a neighbor letter, so let's hold out that vote on the closing the public hearing, all right? That's Logan's Way, this is, okay. And you probably asked for this letter, so thank you for going out and getting it. Actually, you have, we have multiple letters here. Three letters. Okay, so the first one, dated October 7th, 2021, to whom it may concern, we, the undersigned, have no objection to the building of the garage by our neighbor, John Evans, I guess-
That's my middle name, John.
That's fine.
Sorry.
At 18 Lake Walton Road, Wapengers Falls, New York, respectfully, William and Kellyanne Debold, 16 Lake Walton Road. Item, letter number two, dated October 18th, to whom it may concern, this letter is to inform you that I, Louis Baraha, owner of the property at 20 Lake Walton Road, agree that my neighbor, John, at 18 Lake Walton Road, does all the work necessary to build his garage. And number three, October, dated October 25th, 2021, Javier Perez, 22 Lake Walton Road. Dear board members, we are the, one of the closest, as one of the closest and impacted by the proposed detached garage project, which will be built northside relative to the Evans house, we acknowledge that we are aware of his project and we have no concerns. If we have any questions, we can contact them. So, thank you. With that, with, now, with three letters, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Keep me honest.
This is Appeal number 4011, applicant is William Evans, requesting a one, six-foot sideline variance for the requirements of Section 194-107, and the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed 40 feet by 80 feet, 720 square feet detached garage. Resolution offered by Zoning Board Member Aziz Anson, whereas the app, detached garage will be used for extra storage, primarily for vehicles, and whereas the detached garage will match the siding of the house, and whereas the existing shell will be removed from, after the detached garage is installed. And whereas this is a type-two action under SECA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on October 20th, 2021, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on October 26th, 2021, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property, the variance is not substantial, the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request by William Evans for a six-foot sideline variances, variance from the requirements of Section 194-107, and the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed 40 feet by 18 feet, 720 square foot detached garage. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant/owner.
Second.
Thank you. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you. Take it, board.
Item number three, Appeal 4012, Julie Capobianco. Sorry, Capobianco Pearl. 312 Church Street, Wapengers Falls, requesting a five-foot front yards variance for an existing dwelling and a 13-foot front yard variance for a proposed eight-foot by 12-foot or 96 square foot front porch, a 33-foot connecting deck, and an 18-foot by 12-foot or 214-square-foot deck pursuant to Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think they all said it at the same time, so, whoever you want to pick for the second there. All right. Good evening, Mr. Morrow.
Hello, how are you?
Good. So, in this property, we had an opportunity to review this last month, on this property there was a fire. This is in Hillside Lake, by the way, this is not Church Street in downtown Hopewell.
Correct.
This is Church Street in Wapengers, so.
Did you have a good walk?
Yeah, it's in Hillside Lake. Believe me, I keep getting, I see Church Street, and I assume it's right near Frankies, you know?
That caused some confusion.
Yeah, it's-
Because I wasn't here for the review.
The similar names around here sometimes are a little crazy. So, anyway, Hillside Lake has slightly reduced requirements because of the, in their zoning, because of the size of the lots and stuff over there, so. But in building the, rebuilding on, you are rebuilding on the existing foundation, but you're using a modular, and so ultimately, it's, I guess, the overhang of it or something?
Yeah, there's an overhang of a-ish inches?
Yeah, so, and so that's essentially what's necessitating the, a part of the variance, but then, she wishes to have a front porch there.
That's correct.
Yeah, so. Comments or questions from board members? The fire was about 13 months ago?
Yeah, thereabouts.
Yeah, so again, it was built on the existing foundation within the year, so.
That's correct.
I'm good.
So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Julie Capobianco Pearl, 312 Church Street, Wapengers Falls, requesting a five-foot front yard variance for an existing dwelling and a 13 front yard, 13-foot front yard variance for a proposed elf, eight-foot by 12-foot front porch, a 33-foot, square-foot connecting deck, and an 18-foot by 12-foot deck? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? No, thank you. There is one more letter. So, keep that thought. In two, in two applications, number five.
So moved.
Second.
So, we've got a motion to close, and, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Then in reference to Appeal number 4012, applicant Julie Capobianco Pearl, project being a five-foot, requesting a five-foot front yard variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for an existing dwelling, and to a 13-foot front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-94 of the town code for a proposed 96 square foot front porch, 33 square foot connecting deck, and a 214 square foot side deck, known as the variances. Location at 312 Church Street, Wapengers Falls. Resolution offered by Zoning Board Member James Meyer, whereas the prior house was destroyed in a fire approximately 13 months ago, and whereas the foundation being used to build a new house is existing, and whereas the porch is eight-foot by 12-foot, and whereas the lot is a unique configuration, no neighbors would be impacted by the granting of the variances. Whereas this is a type-two action under SECA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on October 20th, 2021, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on October 26th, 2021, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property, the variances are not substantial, the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Julie Capobianco Pearl for one, a five-foot front yard variances, variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for an existing dwelling, two, a 13-foot front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-94 of the town code for a proposed 96 square foot front porch, 33 square foot connecting deck, and a 214 square foot side deck. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant/owner.
Your second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, motion carries, you are all set.
Thank you.
But I do want to thank you, because you show me that I'm not the only one who has difficulty speaking these. Sometimes this stuff is like, all right. Item number four, Appeal 4013, Stavros Papafikos?
Papafikos.
Papa? Okay, thank you.
My, see, we're playing the game, I'm representing, Stavros Papafikos tonight.
Okay, thank you. So, 20 Hill Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 40-foot front yard variance for the existing dwelling, a 44-foot front yard variance for a proposed 22-foot by 5-foot or 110-square-foot front porch, a 39-foot front yard variance for a 13-foot by 23-foot or 299-square-foot addition, all pursuant to Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, good evening.
Good evening.
So, we had the opportunity to review this last month. This is a private road, a house on a, this is a tiny house on a private road. The building inspector provided a picture of it for us, so that we could all see the the size of the existing dwelling. Yeah, it's a cute little house. But, so what you're proposing is a one-story addition, right?
Correct.
Not two stories, so just the one story. You are not adding bedrooms, right?
No bedrooms, no.
So, were you adding a bathroom?
We're, yeah, we're adding a, it's basically for a little kitchenette, dining area, and a bathroom.
Right.
Because right now, the only place there is a bathroom is in the basement, and there's like a little kitchenette in the basement, so he wants to get rid of that and have it so he's, when he's upstairs in the living room, he can actually use it.
Use it, okay.
And then the front, the front door.
Yeah, because again, you're not adding bedrooms, so we didn't have to worry about the septic issue-
No health department, correct.
And stuff like that, so. And frankly, the size of the lot, anything he did to this house is-
What's that?
It's based on the size of the lot, and the, where the house itself is, anything he does to this house is going to require a variance.
Right, and that's, that's why we're here, correct.
Yeah. So, comments or questions from board members?
I'm good. I'm good.
All right, so, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Stavros Papafikos? Papafikos. Sorry. I hate saying names wrong.
Just call him Stavros.
20 Hill Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 40-foot front yard variance for the existing dwelling, a 40-foot, 44-foot front yard variance for the, a proposed 22-foot by 5-foot front porch, a 39-foot front yard variance for a 13-foot by 23-foot addition. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appeal number 4013, Stavros Papafikos. Project will be a 40-foot front yard variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for the existing dwelling, two, a 44-feet front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-94 of the town code for a proposed 22-by-5, 110-square-foot front porch. And three, a 39-foot front yard variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for a 13-by-23-feet, 299-square-feet addition, here and known as the variances. The address is 20 Hill Lane in Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by Zoning Board Member Rocco Limaton, whereas the house is located on a private road, and whereas the applicant is proposing in addition to make the small structure more livable, and whereas the applicant is not adding any new bedrooms, and whereas no neighbors will be impacted by the addition, and whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on October 20th, 2021, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on October 26th, 2021, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of the existing structure. While the variances could be deemed substantial, they are mitigated by the fact that the house is existing, and no neighbors will be impacted by the variances. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Stavros Papafikos for one, a 40-foot front yard variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for the existing dwelling, two, a 44-foot front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-94 of the town code for a proposed 22-feet by 5-feet total 110-square-foot front porch. And three, a 39-foot front yard variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for 13-foot by 23-foot total 299-square-foot addition. Be it further resolved that within five days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly, duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant/owner.
Your second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. You're all set, your motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, item number five, Appeal 4014, Michael and Melissa Webb, 6 Logan's Way, Hopewell Junction, requesting a three-foot left sideline variance for an existing pool house, an eight-foot left sideline variance for an existing pool pump, a 10-foot left sideline variance for an existing generator and pool heater pursuant to Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Hello. As we said last month, you had so much fun with us in the past, you had to come back. You had come to us ahead of time, asking about the pool house in the back, and, and we reviewed the configuration of your lot, and the topography of it, and the structural cropping, and everything else that was going on there. You then came, got your permit, your contractor put your pool in, and decided it, somehow You then came, got your permit, your contractor put your pool in, and decided it somehow it moved. Or it got put in a different, slightly different place than what was expected. Thus, the equipment and everything is off a little bit. And so, you took the trouble, I'm going to read a neighbor letter into the record. You did take the trouble to go and see or talk to your neighbors. So, let me read the October first dated, addressed to our clerk, Jackie Keenan. "My wife and I are the neighbors of Michael and Melissa Webb. We are the adjoining property at fourteen Logan's Way. I am writing to inform the Board of Appeals that my wife and I are aware of the newly erected pool house, pool pump, generator, and pool heater located on the Webb's property at Six Logan's Way. The pool house and appurtenment items do not negatively affect our property or our use of our property. Therefore, we have no objection to the Board of Appeals granting the variance pursuant to Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. Please feel free to contact me should you have any questions or need any additional information. I thank you for your attention relative to the matter with my regards and best wishes. He remains sincerely Kevin Reeves." Very nice polite letter. Wow, you're a very polite neighbor.
Kevin Reeves, the attorney? Yeah, that's Kevin.
That's Kevin. All in a positive way, I'm sure you're saying that.
Yes, all in a positive way.
Wow, okay. So anyways, so thank you for taking the trouble of speaking to your neighbors, that always is just, you know, very, very helpful. So, again, nothing the applicants themselves did, it was their contractor ended up just shifting the location of the pool slightly from the original application and permit request. So, any comments or questions from the board?
I'm good.
I'm good.
So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Michael and Melissa Webb, Six Logan's Way, requesting a three-foot sideline variance for an existing pool house, an eight-foot left sideline variance for an existing pool pump, a ten-foot left sideline variance for an existing generator and pool heater? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appeal number 4014, applicant Michael and Melissa Webb, a three-foot left sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing pool house, an eight-foot left sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing pool pump, and a ten-foot left sideline variance from the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing generator and pool heater. Location, Six Logan's Way, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Brandon Rhodas, whereas the applicant applied for a rear line variance as part of Appeal number 3967 to allow the construction of a pavilion for an already existing pool, and whereas this variance was granted at the ZBA's September 2020 meeting, and whereas during construction, the contractor constructed the pavilion in an area that differed slightly from approved plans, which has necessitated the new requested variances, and whereas this action is a type-two action under SECR, and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess' News on October twentieth, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on October twenty-sixth, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the pool pavilion is well-screened and hidden from view sheds, and the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant's house has a large front yard setback, and the pavilion was placed in a logical location relative to the code-compliant pool. The variances requested could be deemed numerically substantial, but the applicant selected the most appropriate location for the pool pavilion. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Michael and Melissa Webb for a three-foot left sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing pool house, an eight-foot left sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing pool pump, and a ten-foot left sideline variance from the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing generator and pool heater. Be it furthermore resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant/owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hopefully, we will not see you again.
We will not see you next year.
Have a good night.
Enjoy.
All right, item number six, Appeal 4015, James Donlin, eleven Maple Avenue, Hopewell Junction, requesting a front yard variance for an existing ten-foot by twelve-foot shed and a two-foot height variance for an existing six-foot fence located in the front yard pursuant to Section 194-107 and 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening. So last month, we had the opportunity to review your application. You purchased this property, and just in the last couple of years, the fence was already existing, you told us, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just a couple of feet in the front of the house. A fence line that lines up with the front of the house wouldn't need a variance, but the fact that it's actually just a couple of feet in front requires the variance. But the shed, you told us that you had delivered, and you put it in the most logical place for the use of it. There is a big clump of vegetation in the front of your house that screens it to some extent, so... And the six-foot fence actually hides, gives you privacy for the pool that's beyond there, so that's one of the reasons it makes sense to have the six-foot fence there. So, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good. Nope.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from James Donlin, eleven Maple Avenue, Hopewell Junction, requesting a front yard variance for an existing ten-foot by twelve-foot shed and a two-foot height variance for an existing six-foot fence located in the front yard? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim? Is that what's going to be used? He's just putting aside. So, in reference to Appeal 4015 by James Donlin, project being a, one, a variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code to allow an existing shed to remain in the front yard, and two, a two-foot fence height variance from the requirements of Section 194-98 of the Town Code for an existing six-foot fence located in the front yard hereafter the variances, located at eleven Maple Avenue, Hopewell Junction. Whereas the current owner bought the house in 2015 with the existing fence which screens the in-ground pool, and whereas the shed was later installed next to the driveway as a logical location given the layout of the property, whereas this is a type-two action under SECR, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess' News on October twentieth, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on October twenty-sixth, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of the existing pool. The variances are not substantial, the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of James Donlin for, one, a front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code to allow an existing shed to remain in the front yard, and two, a two-foot fence height variance from the requirements of Section 194-98 of the Town Code for an existing six-foot fence located in the front yard subject to the applicant installing shrubs to minimize the visual impact of the shed. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant-owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set.
You keep saying eleven Maple Avenue, it's Maple Place.
Okay, do you want us to do this all over again?
I hear...
Michael, is that a...
As amended.
Make a motion to amend the resolution to correct the address to be eleven Maple Avenue, Hopewell Junction.
To correct it to be eleven Maple Place instead of...
Instead of Maple Avenue, I was going to get there. Correct.
So, there's a... Who seconded the motion originally?
Okay, um...
Aziz, so you agree?
I seconded it, and so second as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eleven Maple Place now has variances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
How do you get Avenue everywhere? Try and wake me up.
Is there a Maple Avenue in town? There is, that's what the... That's what the...
They almost got it.
It's one of those day street names where there's multiple of them in town.
They almost got approved. For something.
All right, item number seven, Appeal 4016, Manuel Valenti, twenty-three Friendly Way, Stormville, requesting a three-foot right sideline variance for a proposed ten-foot by twenty-eight and twelve-foot by six or three-hundred-and-fifty-two square foot pool deck, and a variance to allow an existing pool in the front yard pursuant to Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. The parcel has two front yards. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this is, good evening, this is one of those lots that goes front to back.
Correct.
You have a front yard on both sides, because you've... In essence, you have frontage on two streets, okay?
Correct.
And so... Yeah, because... So technically, even though your pool, you think it's in your rear yard because of the front, where your house faces the front, it technically isn't a front yard because the... You have a street on the rear side of you.
And that had the... That was brought up as I had the permit already given from the town.
Right.
That variance wasn't originally... That was being fixed.
So...
The three-foot sideline was the original reason for...
But when you went to put the deck on or put the...
That's when it came up.
You didn't realize that even though it's above ground, that it was actually, that, you know, it still needs variance.
I thought what I was...
So, it's not... Treated like a patio. A patio has a smaller setback requirement.
Exactly, that's the way I read the permit for the pool.
And so the way you... The reason we had to read two different measurements for the pool is because you've got this deck that goes around two sides of the pool, and so there's one side where it's different than the other side, just given the nature of the pool. So, with that said, I guess the only thing I want to be sure of is that there's screening between the pool and... Yes, they're... Okay, so the way the pictures that we got from the building inspector, there is definitely screening with the other roadway, okay?
Got to see that quick.
So, because one thing about pools is they tend to generate noise, so with screening there, it can absorb any noise that would...
Right. It's also pretty far from the road.
Yep. So, comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Manuel Valenti, twenty-three Friendly Way, Stormville, requesting a three-foot right sideline variance for a proposed ten-foot by twenty-eight and twelve-foot by six or three-hundred-and-fifty-two square foot pool deck, and a variance to allow an existing pool in the front yard? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
There was a neighbor letter that I brought last month.
Oh, you're the one who had the neighbor letter last time.
Last month, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's read that into the record before we close that public hearing. Remember, there was one last month where we said, "Let's tuck it in the file so we'll have her for next month." Thank you. All right, so, we have a letter addressed to the town of East Fisk County zoning board. "I have spoken with the Valenti family about their deck and that they will need to get a variance for it as they will be too close to the property line that we share. I am okay with them building the deck. They have designed the three-foot variance, does not bother me or my family." This is signed by Thomas and Jennifer White, twenty-nine Friendly Way. So, with that read into the record, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appeal number 4016, Manuel Valenti. "The project will be, one, a three-foot right sideline from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed ten-foot by twenty-eight foot, twelve-foot by six foot, total three-hundred-and-fifty-two square foot pool deck, and, two, a variance from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code to allow a pool to remain in the front yard. Location is twenty-three Friendly Way, Stormville. Resolution offered by zoning board member Rocco Limatone, whereas the applicant is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a deck for his pool, and whereas the house has two front yards, since the property has frontage on both Friendly Way and Phillips Road, and whereas there is an existing pool which received the required permit and is located approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-five feet from Phillips Road, and whereas this is a type-two action under SECR, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess' News on October twentieth, 2021, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public meeting on October twenty-sixth, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of the existing pool and the layout of the property. The variances are not substantial. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Manuel Valenti for, one, a three-foot right sideline from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed ten-foot by twenty-eight feet and twelve by six feet, total three-hundred-and-fifty-two square foot pool deck, and, two, a variance from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code to allow a pool to remain in the front yard. Be it further resolved that within five days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant-owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Awesome, take care.
All right, that's it for public hearings. For the members who got here a little bit late, I did say, announce for everybody that there is no item nine this evening because that applicant has requested to be heard next month. And what we do need to add, one additional court-related issue to the end of our agenda, so we will have an explanation from our town attorney as to what's going on with some outstanding litigation, and we'll have to deal with that. So, we still have two reviews left. These are brand-new applications for this board, we have not reviewed them before. So, keep in mind that, you know, you guys are asking for things that are not allowed by code, and that's why you're here, and so we're going to take the time to review them this evening, and then we'll notice your neighbors for next month to conduct a public hearing, as you just saw, so that, you know, the more we understand your application, the easier your public hearing will tend to go, okay? So, with that said, we have the two last... We'll start with item number eight, Appeal 4017, Heidi Velez, seventy-four Moore Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a ten-foot rear line variance for an existing ten-foot by twelve-foot or one-hundred-and-twenty square foot pool cabana pursuant to Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. So, if you don't mind, Heidi?
It's my wife, how are you? I'm Eric.
I had to do that. Just take us through what your request is.
I just need a... There's a movable pool cabana shed. I was under an impression it was fifteen feet because it's a movable shed, but the inspector told me I needed thirty feet, so I need ten feet setback from the back.
Okay, so if it's movable, why don't we move it to where it belongs?
What happens is if I move it ten feet forward, it'd be inside the pool.
Inside.
Okay. That would be a good reason.
Hard to catch the sun that way. And you can't move it to the other side of the pool or anything like that.
No, it's still going to have that setback issue. Like, on the right side, I have the pool equipment, and then I have a retaining bench in the front, and a pergola that was approved in the front, so the only place that it's going to fit would be there.
What you sent us is pretty tiny, so let me just take a quick look. So you're in four corners, which the... That was set up as a cluster subdivision, so you've got smaller lots to begin with, so that's, you know, that already restricts use of your property. You've got pavers, I don't know how close they go to your property line, do we... Can we tell that?
The pavers?
Yeah.
I'm not... Think it's like twenty, twenty-five feet, I'm not sure, to be honest.
There's a twenty-six-foot measurement here, but I'm not sure what it's referring There's a 26-foot measurement here, but I'm not sure what it's referring to. Can anybody tell what that refers to?
No.
Nice.
That's for the pool.
Yeah. There's no, I mean, there's an arrow for the pavers and an arrow for the pool offset.
I presume it's for the, I don't know. I presume it was for the pool because on one side it says 27.5 and the other one says 26.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I think that is the one for the pool, 25 on one side, 26 on the other.
Okay.
27, 26. So, I mean, it's probably closer than 10 feet or whatever that a patio is supposed to have, but.
That's what I'm trying to get at. But is, there's a fence line, that's the square, then the patio is the curved one.
Yes.
So the, what's the closest point? What is, what's the side yard requirement for a patio in?
15.
Even in a, on, in a cluster lot? Okay. All right. So, do we, we should, it looks appears we should have 15 feet there. Do we agree or no?
Yeah, it's pretty darned close, that's for sure.
When was this survey done? September 8th?
Yes.
You have a new survey. You have, you know what? You can go back to Bobby Oswald and say, you need these lines better, okay?
Okay.
You have time between when we, well, you don't have a whole lot of time because we'll have to notice if we need to do the patio.
We can notice, we can notice as if we need, as if he needs a patio variance and we'll include that and then if he doesn't in the end, it's not.
Okay. If he needs a patio, it's not gonna be by much.
Right, exactly.
It's gonna be like a foot or two. That's it. So.
So when you go back to survey, what you're asking for is the distance between all the things you have on your property.
The patio, okay.
Yeah, the patio especially. That's, that's really what I'm trying to get at is whether that's.
Do you have an urgency to have this thing approved and?
Well, he just had, he just had this done last month.
I know.
So he should be able to get this updated very quickly.
I'll get it updated, but I'm waiting. I put a permit for generator, so they're actually waiting for this to finish in order to continue with the generator.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because the thing is that it curves, curves out and so.
Right, at its, at its closest point.
Could be with 10, 12 feet. I don't know.
Right. So that's all. That's, if we can just get that in time for us to notice for your public hearing, that would be helpful. All right, any other comments or concerns for board members?
Um, no. The distance from the, so there's a shed in the back, there's a pool cabana and then there's a pool. What's the distance between the pool and the cabana approximately?
10 feet.
10 feet. Okay. So that, yeah, so even if you move it, you still would need a variance. So whether it's five feet or, or some, some feet. I mean, so you will still need a variance, I mean.
Yep. If he moved it forward, he'd be in, it would, you know, to eliminate the variance, it would be in the pool.
In the pool, correct, correct. So he will still need a, a variance.
And he's got screening along the back, he's got screening along the one side and he's got a fence on the other side. So what kind of fence is it?
Uh, I believe it's 54.
It's what?
It's a 54-inch fence.
What kind? Is it a, is it a vinyl fence that?
A metal fence. It's a metal fence. It's metal, metal fence.
Like iron? What, wouldn't we say metal?
I could, I could get you the, I forgot the.
Is it chain link or?
Yeah, it's a chain link, sorry.
Hmm. Is it vinyl coated chain link?
I'm not sure. I know I got it just, I just got approved for it. I had to move it forward.
Okay, because chain link fences aren't allowed.
Oh, that's in front.
Oh, we have the report. Okay. Normally we see the reports from the building inspector, so. Nice fence, actually.
It's a nice fence. That's fine.
Yeah, that's a lot nicer than a chain link fence.
A chain link.
Boy, you're.
I'm not handy at all. I can't even change a bowl.
All right. Are you sure you don't want to be standing up all the way to home?
She's worse than I am.
No, no, this is fine.
Let Brandon see this.
I think you better take over.
Actually, let me, let me show these guys the, I think we're coming to your house for a party or something. That's a nice backyard. Nice pool cabana.
Thank you.
I like that cabana. I see that all the time.
Yeah. So let me just share that with Brandon.
You got cold beer in there?
[laughing].
Is that a TV I see?
So let Brandon see the fence and then that, and then he can pass that, he can return that to Jackie. All right, comments or questions from board members?
This is the fence.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the fence is fine.
Motion advertised?
Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll see you next month. But Jackie, oh, there she is, has to give you, you have to put a sign up in the front of your home so that people will know that you're asking for the variance. And if you have an opportunity to speak to your neighbors and can bring a neighbor letter that we'll try to remember and read into the record, okay?
Okay, thank you.
That would be great. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay? Have a good evening.
Take care.
Who's Vandell or?
This is the, the last one.
Oh.
The next one.
Got it. Sorry. All right. And let's guess who you are. Item number 10, Appeal 4019, Jeffrey Vandell, 69 Kensington Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 7-foot sideline variance for a proposed 18-foot by 40-foot in-ground pool and hot tub pursuant to Section 194, Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. All right, so, let's take a look at your application. So the first thing we always have to ask is, can you reduce it because you're asking for an 18-foot by 40-foot pool? So can you re, if you reshunk the size of the pool, do you eliminate the need for the variance or no? Because if it's the 18-foot side, no, you're not gonna eliminate it.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't because it's, it's tight against the house.
We should put our backyard, you know, and see why we can't put it in the back.
Yeah, well, we can't put it in the back and it's gotta be on the side.
It's a whole bunch.
Oh, they're all different pictures.
They're the different pictures.
It's just two different pictures.
Okay, so multiple sets, okay.
One, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you have, you don't have a lot of flat area.
No, it's, if you look at the survey too, the top of graphics will show you, it's, it's, it's pretty much a hill.
We're good, we're good. If you don't mind, if you could just give the clerk one set. Thank you. Okay, so you're proposing to put it on the side of your house there?
Yeah. If you look at the first picture.
Where that, where that patio set is or where that chair is?
Yeah, where the patio set is. The, the pool will be about, almost nine feet, 8.9 feet off to the left of the garage that you're seeing, and it will be 18 feet off of the property line of 67 Kensington. And then it will, it'll run up towards that small tree that you see in the middle. It'll, it'll run up that way. That tree will be removed.
Okay. So I guess the biggest issue I have is you, you don't appear to have any vegetation in the front of your yard. How are you gonna screen this?
Oh, we're gonna have a, we're going with a wrought iron fence.
Okay.
And then probably like arborvitae's or something like that.
Some screening, some vegetative screening in front of it.
Yes, it'll be vegetative.
We'll have some height to it.
And then on the side, the only neighbors that it affects would be 67 Kensington. And you could see that's where the tree line is already existing.
Yeah, yep.
Again, the fence will be there, same fence, and we're gonna add even more shrubs.
Okay. Do you actually have a planting plan? Do you have an idea of what you're gonna do?
We, we were gonna wait until they actually put the pool down to, to do that. We know we're having arborvitae's in the front and on the side by our neighbors.
Okay.
We know we're doing that. The other types of plants are, we haven't really pecked out yet.
That's fine. Kim, but can we ask you to take and draw out based on your survey? Just make a copy of your survey and then point out how many arborvitae's you're talking about, just so that we can be sure that there's appropriate screening?
Okay.
If one of your neighbors across the street wants to see if they have the ability with it.
Across the street is the historical building, the Pudney Palin House.
Yes, East Fishkill Historical Building.
Okay.
And then the only neighbors, like I said, that it affects were friendly with them and they're willing to write a letter or come in, whatever they have to do.
They're all for it.
That's fine. Motion advertised?
Motion to advertise. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Jackie will give you your instructions for your sign and then we'll see you next month, okay?
Okay. And, and when I, when I write, when I draw in the, where the trees will be and the foliage, do I do it to scale on the survey that you guys have here or do I have to?
It'd be helpful if we could, yeah, it would be helpful if we could just understand how many trees you're talking about and the fact that, whether you're actually covering the, the whole, so that we're not even gonna see the fence at all, or if you're just talking about spacing them. And then what type you're talking about, because we want to be sure arborvitae's are, tend, can be deer food. So you just want to make sure you're, you've got the right kinds so that you're not.
Well, we're hoping if we have the space to actually put some inside the fence to avoid the deer, so.
Yeah, but fence, deer can jump fences, so.
Wow, I know that.
If they're hungry enough, they'll jump.
Hetzi juniper. Hetzi, Hetzi juniper. H-E-T-Z-I juniper. They're more deer resistant as they get older. You fence them in a little bit in the beginning as they get older, the deer usually don't bother them much.
So we did plan on going with a landscaper. That's what, we're not even there yet. We, you know.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
It's gonna look pretty.
Sounds like it.
Thank you. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Michael because he has to explain some outstanding litigation to us and the outcome of, and what we have to do this evening.
Sure. So obviously when something comes from the town attorney's office, it's what nobody generally wants to hear, but, but I think, I think this matter will actually have a soft landing. So this was Appeal number 3896 and the applicant was Gunther Cattrall. And I know some of the board was, some members of the board were on the board at the time, but some may not have been. And this was the proposed 1,612 square foot variance for an existing 40 by 40 detached garage in the requirements of Section 194 and 107(c) of the zoning ordinance, and it was located at 110 Van Black Road. So during the applicant's approval process, the applicant was actually denied at the ZBA's June 23, 20 meeting due to the ZBA's concern about the substantiality of the variance request, the difficulty preventing the applicant from parking commercial vehicles of the property, the fact that the shed was causing water runoff to neighboring properties, and the difficulty was self-created due to the applicant installing the structure without building permits. Thereafter, the applicant commenced an Article 78 proceeding, which the town, which our office defended. And then the judge determined that the ZBA had to set aside its decision order to allow the town's floodplain administrator an opportunity to review the application in more depth. Thereafter, the floodplain administrator viewed the application in more depth, determined that if the applicant made certain changes to the property pursuant to a plan completed by Brian Stokosa, then it would solve the flooding issue. And upon hearing this, the judge indicated in a conference that his opinion was that the ZBA should issue a decision in order approving the variance. Thereafter, our office filed a notice of appeal and we know that this board stands by its reasoning. And rather than pursue this litigation further, which will likely have an uncertain result, and frankly, on appeal, the standard of review is against the town, we would propose the ZBA acknowledging the judge's decision intention to allow the structure to remain in place, subject to the applicant installing onsite improvements to stop flooding to neighboring downstream properties. And so part of, this is pretty nuanced because we're not actually advocating or proposing that this board approve the variance. We're just requesting that this board acknowledge the judge's decision. And then there are certain conditions that this decision order would impose, such as the applicant obtaining his floodplain development permit and completing all necessary work, filing a declaration that no commercial activity takes place at the property, installation of screening, and that also the floodplain administrator will provide a report to the ZBA by June 2022.
Okay, not only that, no commercial activity, but he cannot rent that garage. And it's not a shed, that's a garage. It's a huge.
It's a warehouse.
But he cannot rent it to anybody who does not live on the property, right? Who does not, yeah, is not living on the property.
And, and in the proposed decision says, and that the garage space at the property shall not be available to, for rent to anyone not living at the property.
Right. Because again, what, one of our bigger concerns, not just the look, not just the flooding, was the fact that the man does not, the owner of the property doesn't live there and he's got two huge garages, in addition to the garages under his house, that he is using for, yeah, he showed us, he had a collection of cars, no question. But the opportunity exists for some future user of this property to operate a business out of there, honestly. So, so, so when we talk about the flooding that's, that's, is going to be addressed by the, through the floodplain permit and reviewed by the, our administrator, that's not just the flooding there at the site, but it's gonna, the neighbors who come, you know, who had, got our attention further downstream because they're around the corner and down a ways, because their backyard was now getting flooded where it had never been before. That should correct the conditions that they were experiencing as well.
Absolutely. And, and.
And so do we have the ability to, I know you wrote in here that the administrator is gonna issue a report the next June, that we want them to do the conditions within, they want, we want them to do the construction within the next 60 days. And then next June, our administrator would issue a report about the, what's the word you use, efficacy of the, of the, that the improvements are working?
Right, exactly.
Okay, so.
Yeah, because as I recall, there was an issue that he brought in Phil, so that was one thing, that it wasn't, the floodplain that was there wasn't able to be used by the neighboring stream or whatever, so that was perhaps causing some of the runoff. But I presume, again, echoing what the chair is saying, I, it's gotta be both things. It's gotta be the runoff as well as what happened on the property.
And it'll accomplish both and there will be monitoring for that.
So, my next question is that, is, I mean, as we go forward on this, do we need to indicate that more? I mean, in other words, if we approve this, this just means that, you know, under condition four, he has to fully cooperate with the flood administrator, floodplain administrator in order for this to become effective?
Right. He'll have to fully comply with his plan and then if, if it doesn't work, he'll be violated like anybody else would if, if.
Because I was just wondering, I've been looking at this and wondering whether we put it in there as one of the conditions or add to the language, the necessary construction be completed on one within two months of this, and said construction be in full compliance with the floodplain administrator remediation plan? Would he even stay as prepared by Brian Stokosa?
We can, we can put in the date of the plan too.
It's not, is it a remediation plan or is it a natural permit?
He'll get a, he'll get a permit to, in order to, to comply with his remediation plan.
Okay.
To actually construct a remediation plan.
He gets books.
Yes.
Because he caused the problem.
Oh, oh, yes.
He had to remediate the problem, so that's why it's remediation.
And I don't, I don't think the applicant is disputing that his property is the issue at this point. It's more, I think at this point, the applicant knows that he, he has an issue.
He was very nice. There's no question. This poor gentleman did this, you know, without realizing the consequences of what he was doing.
Exactly.
I mean, it sits back by the way.
But, 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 you know, the bottom line is those, those two warehouses are, are very, very visible, not just from Van Black Road, but honestly, on 376, you can see them in the dead of winter when, you know, the leaves are off the trees. They, so the idea would be, there's gotta be some screening from the road so that we're not encouraging other people to do things like this.
And, and that's part of condition number three. So, and that'll also be, they'll have to submit a plan that meets the town planner and/or town's consultant's approval. Because I think also during the winter too, as I think the board knows, the, the town will have a better chance to see where actually, where this garage is visible from. Because during, during summer and spring, there's some leaf cover, but during, um, late fall and winter, it's a little different.
So, questions from board members?
I mean, I think the conditions that you are providing, that we are discussing, will mitigate concerns of the neighbors and our, our concerns and acknowledge what the judge, you know, has suggested. And I think it'll solve that rather than trying to appeal it and get, get reversed.
And to look at the silver lining, I mean, is to, he wants the building. This will prompt him to make the remediation necessary to protect the neighbors.
That's true.
Well, and I think that's probably, that's really the town's major concern at this point, is just making sure that no neighbors are further negatively impacted by this property.
Go ahead.
Nothing, but the conditions outlined, I mean, it makes sense as long as those conditions are adhered to.
Does somebody wish to offer the resolution?
Oh, do you have amended the?
Well, I'll, I'll read what and I'll put that.
Okay.
If I did, if everybody's okay with that.
That's fine.
Then I would offer in reference to Appeal number 3896, the applicant Gunther Cattrall, project being a 1,612 square foot variance for an existing 40 by 40-foot detached garage from the requirements of Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance, located at 110 Van Black Road, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant applied for a variance from the requirements of Section 194-107(c) for the existing 40-foot by 40-foot detached garage, whereas the application was denied at the ZBA's June 23, 2020 meeting due to the ZBA's concerns about the substantiality of the variance request, the difficulty preventing the applicant from parking commercial vehicles at the property, the fact that the shed was causing water runoff to neighboring properties, and that the difficulty was self-created due to the applicant installing the structure without building permits. Whereas thereafter, the applicant commenced an Article 78 proceeding against the ZBA pursuant to index number 2020-52750, and whereas the judge determined that the ZBA had to set aside its decision order to allow the town's floodplain administrator to review the application in more depth. Whereas the floodplain administrator's review determined that if the applicant made certain changes to its property, then it would solve the flooding issue. Whereas upon hearing this, the judge indicated in a conference that his opinion was that the ZBA should issue a decision order approving the variance. Whereas the ZBA stands by its reasoning and appealed to the appellate division, Second Department, index number 2021-03611. And whereas rather than pursue this. two-thousand twenty-one-zero-three-six-one-one, and whereas rather than pursue this litigation further with an uncertain result, the ZBA would be willing to acknowledge the judge's decision and intention to allow the structure to remain in place subject to the applicant installing onsite improvements to stop flooding to neighboring and downstream properties, and whereas this acknowledgement will not have a precedential effect on future applications. Now therefore, be it resolved as a result of the foregoing, this decision in order of the zoning board of appeals is to acknowledge the judge's intention to allow the structure to remain subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant obtains its floodplain development permit to make the necessary changes to the property to prevent flooding to the neighboring and downstream properties, and that the necessary construction constitute in full compliance with the flood administrator's remediation plan as prepared by, I'm not sure, Brian's...
Brian Stokosa.
Brian Stokosa, but I don't know, engineer, I'm not sure what his, PE, that, and set construction be completed within two months of the date of this decision and order. Two, the applicant filed a declaration with the Dutchess County Clerk's Office to the satisfaction of the town attorney's office stating that no commercial activity shall occur at the property, including but not limited to commercial deliveries, and that garage space at the property should not be available to rent to anyone living at the property.
Not living.
That's what, did I say that?
You said anyone living.
Okay.
Big difference.
Sorry for, missed the not, anyone not living at the property, and... I'm just thinking whether we add work on vehicles to that, too.
Yeah, he shouldn't be operating a business, he totally, he made it clear he's not, but I, I think the deed restriction should further cover the fact that he should not be operating a business here.
Sure, so that's, that's why we added the phrase, no commercial activity shall occur at the property? And we can strengthen that language however the board...
Yeah, let's, point blank.
No, no, and we'll make it clear in there, no business activity.
Three, screening shall be installed pursuant to a plan to be approved by the town's planner and/or consultants. Four, the floodplain administrator should provide a report to the ZBA by June two-thousand twenty-two pertaining to the efficacy of the onsite improvements. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is your second?
Second is amended.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, the motion carries. So Jim, if you don't mind, give to Jackie the amendment.
You wanna close up first, we're all done.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Pavers, he used to do that. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.